Good evening. It is May 8, 2023. This meeting is called to order. Please join me in saying the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, a one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, can we do a roll call?
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Fitzie.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews. Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Six board members present.
Thank you. Just to let everyone know that President Matthews is attending his son's awards assembly at Greeley West this evening, so there are no Board of Education president announcements, but I would like to welcome Tommy Medina III and Richard Alaniot in joining us tonight at our board table. So thank you, and we'll move right along with the agenda. We just need a motion to approve the agenda.
It's not coming up.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District 6 approves the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Lemon, can we do a roll call?
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Norwood.
Aye.
Director Pappas.
Aye.
Director Sullivan. Motion carries six, zero.
Thank you. We will move right along to board member comments and reports, and I think we started with Ms. Sullivan last time, so we'll start with Dr. Campos Fizzi.
All right, so it's been about a month since we've met, and it's been busy. May is very busy for school boards, I have learned, and it just gets busier because of graduation season, so I'm pretty excited about that. But in the last month, things that I've been excited to be involved in, as a family doctor at the Sunrise Clinic, we got to host the Greeley Dream Team students, the middle schoolers in their program to come and learn about different healthcare careers, from pharmacists to dentists to nurses and doctors. Then on April 25, I got to go to Northridge for their Marine Corps JROTC Awards Night. What mosted out for me from that event was how many community service hours those students have put in. I think when you added them all up, it was over 900 hours specifically for the Toys for Tots event in December, so truly, truly impressive. Director Mash, Director Bentley, and I got to go to another eighth grade event in the last month. It was the Holocaust Survivor Memorial, and I believe all of our eighth graders, or there was about 1,000 eighth graders at the Union Colony Civic Center that joined us for that event, and it was very memorable because, right, not every day you meet a Holocaust survivor, and as one of the students pointed out, these survivors aren't going to be alive for very much longer, so it felt like an honor to be able to hear Fred's story. Other things, we got to see what the heck is happening at Heath. Kent Henson got to show us that south side of Heath that you see driving on 16th Street. I live really close to there, so I get to see it all the time and was excited to hear about their timeline and the woodshop and music rooms that they're getting ready for the students, as well as the Maker Space. Director Bentley and myself got to go to the Boys and Girls Elegant Fundraising Event, put on by United Way to help fundraise for that organization. But the two events that I think stood out the most for me were our visit to the District 6 Nutritional Services. They're way out on Fourth Avenue, out like east of I-85, and they do magic over there, and they're phenomenal. Like, I know, like, the cafeteria doesn't feel like something you should brag about as a district, but they are brag-worthy there. They make something called Liquid Gold, and it's made with three ingredients. So basically, for like nachos and things like that, they were putting cheese whiz on a lot of these things, which are not super healthy, and so the district, the leadership at the Nutrition Services were like, we can do better than this for our students. We shouldn't be giving them all these preservatives. And so they came up with this three ingredient liquid cheese, and it's cheese, water, and a stabilizer. Those are the three ingredients, and the way it works is they designed like a huge arm that's like an immersion blender that goes into these vats of the ingredients that get heated up, and then this immersion blender makes it into Liquid Gold. And so our students get to have real cheese instead of just kind of plastic put on their nachos now. I also found out that our district makes their own salsa because, or hot sauce, because there was no hot sauce that exists that had a sodium content that was low enough to meet USDA regulations. And so they made their own, and they didn't only make one. They have like four different flavors, and I got to try one of them, and it was delicious. But anyway, they're doing awesome things there, and I'm so proud that we have them. And then lastly, the Maplewood Mustangs, who are also just down the street from where I live, got to have their first ever career day, and they had about 27 presenters from Realtors to doctors to, they had a policeman there and a pet store owner and a bookstore owner, and it was really cool just to expose a bunch of elementary school students there to different career options that they can dream about. So yeah, busy month. It's going to get busier ahead, but excited to be part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, it was a busy month. I got to attend a lot of the same events. 414, the Heat Beam Topping was fun, even though it snowed on us. We got to sign our names and watch them put the final beam up there. The Holocaust Survivor presentation at Civic Center was really fun, I guess not fun, but like, I got a lot out of it. He did do a lot of correlations between what happened with Hitler and the Holocaust to what's going on with Russia and Ukraine, and it was just kind of nice to hear maybe an outsider or somebody with experiences' perspective. You know, we just get to hear American news and stuff, so to hear the way that he related those two events was kind of eye-opening and borderline a little bit scary, but I'm just glad I was able to make that. 428, we got to go back to Heath and see exactly what they're doing outside of just putting beams up. And as Kent said, the building's going to be sexy, and they're excited, and it's going to be a great-looking building, so yeah.
You did say sexy.
Yeah, the Boys and Girls Club annual dinner was fun. I know we do a lot kind of with them, and they support each other, but it was just fun to see the community come together. I think they raised like $500,000 in one night that night, so it's pretty amazing just to see as much as Greeley gives, and they just continue to give and continue to give, and it's pretty inspiring and admirable of the community members. The D6 Retirement Celebration on 53 was amazing. It's always amazing. We did it at the Ballroom at UNC, which was a great venue for that. Just amazing to see some of those employees and the dedicated service they've put in over the years, and just wish them one last happy retirement. Nutrition Services, we finally got to go there. We've seen Danielle and her team and get awards and recognized, and we see her everywhere and hear from her a lot, but this was my first trip to Nutrition Services, and I got a kick butt breakfast burrito, and we got the full spill, so it was a great time. And then I got to participate in the Dream Team golf tournament on Saturday. They graciously let me go play in the 40-degree weather for her, so glad to be a part of that. That was a good event. And I think maybe the largest turnout you guys have had, right?
Yeah.
So yeah, a lot of stuff going on. Graduation season, a lot of stuff coming up, and just excited to kind of wrap up the school year.
Thank you. Ms. Mash?
I'm kind of divvied up like which events we would highlight. So I also got to attend the Young Chautauqua Presentations at Centennial Village, and if you're not familiar with that, those are elementary, I think, actually, I think it goes all the way up to high school, but they choose a historical character, and they study that person so that they can give a monologue as that person, then they answer questions as that person, and then they answer questions as the historian. But it's so much fun to see the figures that people choose. I got to see Walt Disney, Julia Child, and Isabella Bird, I believe, who is a woman who climbed Long's Peak in the 1800s in skirts, and it was pretty amazing. So congratulations to those students for all their hard work. I got to attend the Rockies game, the D6 Rockies game, and I appreciate that partnership that allows our students and families to attend a Rockies game at a discounted rate. On the Greeley Children's Corral, sing the National Anthem, and I think we were good luck because I understand the Rockies haven't been doing really well, but they won like 12 to 1 that day, so we helped out with that, I'm sure. I've been to a lot of arts programs here recently. I got to see Wizard of Oz at Frontier Academy, which was delightful, the gala at Central. Just, we have an amazing arts program at every school, and I appreciate all the teachers and the community opportunities. Greeley Central's choir got to sing with UNC and with the Chamber Choir as well, so that's, there's so many great opportunities. I wanted to say congratulations to all of our spring sports athletes. I know Greeley West and Greeley Central tennis teams are sending two doubles teams to state, as well as the Greeley West Swim and Dive Team is sending a relay team, two individual swimmers and one diver, and congratulations to anyone else who's going to state. Our athletes show class with great sportsmanship and really are great ambassadors for District 6. One more thing I will highlight is, as a board member, I get to be a part of the Student Wellness Committee, and we have quarterly meetings, and what I think is really great about many aspects of District 6, but in this scenario as well, we don't just put programs into place, we also evaluate their effectiveness. And so there is a way to assess our wellness plan and how well we're doing with that. Looks at all the different areas that are required by the state for us to be addressing and gives us kind of a grade on where we're at, and so that was really fascinating to see. I think we're doing some really great work. We are partnering with the Centennial Park Library to have a seed library, so if any of you are gardeners, you can go to the library and get free seeds, and they're in different categories if you want something that attracts pollinators, you know butterflies and bees to your yard. If you're looking for a salsa mix, you can get all the seeds for tomatoes and peppers, and so that's a lot of fun as well. Yeah, I just really appreciate getting to be a cheerleader for the district. The report to the community is out, and it always gives just fantastic facts about all the programs, the students that are just going above and beyond, the teachers are going above and beyond, and I like the district by the numbers. It's kind of a fun snapshot to see. So thank you to Teresa Myers and her team for getting that out.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Norwood?
Well, it's been a busy time of the year for me and my private business, so I haven't made as many events as I would like to, but I did get out to watch a couple of very cold soccer games and support some of the local sports teams in their endeavors in state. I also got out to Northridge to, I got an invitation from a couple of students that signed the signature on the invitation.
Right, not every day you meet a Holocaust survivor. And as one of the students pointed out, they, these survivors aren't going to be alive for very much longer. So it felt like an honor to be able to hear Fred's story. Other things, we got to see what the heck is happening at Heath. Kent Henson got to show us that south side of Heath that you see driving on 16th Street. I live really close to there, so I get to see it all the time and was excited to hear about their timeline and the woodshop and music rooms that they're getting ready for the students, as well as the Maker Space. Director Bentley and myself got to go to the Boys and Girls Elegant Night Fundraising Event, put on by United Way to, to help fundraise for that organization. And but the two events that I think stood out the most for me were our visit to the District Six Nutritional Services. They're way out on Fourth Avenue, out like east of I-85. And they do magic over there and they're phenomenal. Like, I, I know, like, the cafeteria doesn't feel like something you should brag about as a district, but they are brag-worthy there. They make something called Liquid Gold and it's made with three ingredients. So basically, for like nachos and things like that, they were putting cheese whiz on a lot of these things, which are not super healthy. And so the district, the leadership at the Nutrition Services were like, we, we can do better than this for our students. We shouldn't be giving them all these preservatives. And so they came up with this three ingredient cheese, liquid cheese, and it's cheese, water, and a stabilizer. Those are the three ingredients. And the way it works is they designed like a huge arm that's like an immersion blender that goes into these vats of the ingredients that get heated up, and then this immersion blender makes it into Liquid Gold. And so our students get to have real cheese instead of just kind of plastic put on their nachos now. I also found out that our district makes their own salsa because, or hot sauce, because there was no hot sauce that exists that had a sodium content that was low enough to meet like USDA regulations. And so they made their own and they didn't only make one. They have like four different flavors and I got to try one of them and it was delicious. But anyway, they're, they're doing awesome things there and I'm, I'm so proud that, that we have them. And then lastly, the Maplewood Mustangs, who are also just down the street from where I live, got to have their first ever career day. And they had about 27 presenters from realtors to doctors, to, they had police, a policeman there and a pet store owner and a bookstore owner. And it was really cool just to expose a bunch of elementary school students there to different career options that they can dream about. So yeah, busy month. It's going to get busier ahead, but excited to be part of it.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, it was a busy month. I got to attend a lot of the same events. 414, the heat beam topping was, was fun, even though it snowed on us. We got to sign our names and watch them put the final beam up there. The Holocaust Survivor Presentation at Civic Center was, was really fun. I guess not fun, but like, I got a lot out of it. He, he, he did do a lot of correlations between what happened with Hitler and, and the Holocaust to what, what's going on with Russia and Ukraine. And it was, it was just kind of nice to hear maybe an outsider or somebody with experiences perspective. You know, we just get to hear American news and, and stuff. So to hear, to hear the way that he related those two events was, was kind of eye-opening and borderline a little bit scary, but it was, I'm just glad I was able to make that. 428, we got to go back to Heath and see what, exactly what they're doing outside of just putting beams up. And, and as Kent said, the, the building's going to be sexy and, and they're excited. And it's, it's going to be a great looking building, so.
You did say sexy.
Yeah, the, and the Boys and Girls Club Annual Dinner was, was fun. I know we do a lot kind of with them and, and they support, we support each other. But it was just fun to see the community come together. I think they raised like $500,000 in one night, that night. So it's pretty amazing just to see, as much as Greeley gives and they just continue to give and continue to give. And it, it's pretty, it's pretty inspiring and, and admirable of, of, of the, the community members. The D6 Retirement Celebration on 53 was amazing. It's always amazing. We, we did it at the Ballroom at UNC, which was a great venue for that. Just amazing to see some of those employees and the dedicated service they've put in over the years. And, you know, just wish them one last happy retirement. Nutrition Services, we finally got to go there. We've, we've seen Danielle and her team and get awards and recognized. And we see her everywhere and hear from her a lot. But this was my first trip to Nutrition Services. And I got a kick butt breakfast burrito and, and we got the, the full spill. So it was, it was a great time. And then I got to participate in the Dream Team Golf Tournament on Saturday. Graciously let me go play in the 40-degree weather for her. So glad to be part of that. That was a good event. And I think maybe the largest turnout you guys have had.
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, a lot of stuff going on. Graduation season, a lot of stuff coming up and just excited to, to kind of wrap up the school year.
Thank you. Ms. Mash?
Um, we kind of divvied up like which events we would highlight. So I also got to attend the Young Chautauqua Presentations at Centennial Village. And if you're not familiar with that, those are elementary, I think, actually, I think it goes all the way up to high school. But they choose a historical character and they study that person so that they can give a monologue as that person. Then they ask, answer questions as that person and then they answer questions as the historian. But it's so much fun to see the, the figures that people choose. I got to see Walt Disney, Julia Child, and Isabella Byrd, I believe, who is a woman who climbed Long's Peak in the 1800s in skirts. And it was pretty amazing. So congratulations to those students for all their hard work. I got to attend the Rockies game, the D6 Rockies game, and I appreciate that partnership that allows our students and families to attend a Rockies game at a discounted rate. And the Greeley Children's Corral sang the National Anthem. And I think we were good luck because I understand the Rockies haven't been doing really well, but they won like 12 to 1 that day. So we, we helped out with that, I'm sure. I've been to a lot of arts programs here recently. I got to see Wizard of Oz at Frontier Academy, which was delightful. The Gala at Central. Just, we have an amazing arts program at every school. And I appreciate all the teachers and the community opportunities. Greeley Central's choir got to sing with UNC and with the Chamber Choir as well. So that's, there's so many great opportunities. Wanted to say congratulations to all of our spring sports athletes. I know Greeley West and Greeley Central Tennis Teams are sending two doubles teams to state, as well as the Greeley West Swim and Dive Team is swimming, sending a relay team, two individual swimmers and one diver. And congratulations to anyone else who's going to state. Our athletes show class with great sportsmanship and really are great ambassadors for District Six. One more thing I will highlight is, as a board member, I get to be a part of the Student Wellness Committee. And we have quarterly meetings. And what I think is really great about many aspects of District Six, but in this scenario as well, we don't just put programs into place, we also evaluate their effectiveness. And so there is a way to assess our wellness plan and how well we're doing with that. Looks at all the different areas that are required by the state for us to be addressing and gives us kind of a grade on where we're at. And so that was really fascinating to see. I think we're doing some really great work. We are partnering with the Centennial Park Library to have a seed library. So if any of you are gardeners, you can go to the library and get free seeds. And they're in different categories. If you want something that attracts pollinators, you know, butterflies and bees to your yard. If you're looking for a salsa mix, you can get all the seeds for tomatoes and peppers and onions. So that's a lot of fun as well. Yeah, I just really appreciate getting to be a cheerleader for the district. The Report to the Community is out and it always gives just fantastic facts about all the programs, the students that are just going above and beyond. The teachers are going above and beyond. And I like the district by the numbers. It's kind of a fun snapshot to see. So thank you to Teresa Myers and her team for getting that out.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Mr. Norwood?
Well, it's been a busy time of the year for me and my private business, so I haven't made as many events as I would like to. But I did get out to watch a couple of very cold soccer games and support some of the local sports teams in their endeavors in state. I also got out to Northridge to, I got an invitation from a couple of students that signed letters of intent to play soccer at the next level. So I was, it was fun to get out there and get reconnected with them and get a chance to visit with them. And then, as Dr. Campos Spitsy said, we did get a chance to go out to the Marine Corps Award Ceremony. And congratulations to them for, did they win state? Is that what they said in their marksmanship? And now they're off to Nationals. Is that right, Mr. Osmond? So they're off to Nationals pretty soon? So best of luck to them. And the, the program that they do for the Toys for Tots is just incredible. What a blessing to some of the area kids that don't get gifts, that these guys spend hundreds of hours donating to that charity, so.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan?
Yeah, excuse me, the teacher retirement was actually pretty intense. There was a lady there, and forgive me, I can't remember her name, but it was a lasting impression because she has been with the district for 44 years. So that had to been her sole job. Because goodness, it was just neat to see all the families there and how they were supporting them and whatnot. And the other event, yeah, definitely was the Marine Corps Awards. It's always just an honor to be around all those young men and women. They're always so respectful. And, but most of all, I think it was more of an honor because they always have the retired vets show up that are invited from around the states that come in to help honor those young men and women and pass out their awards and whatnot. Mr. Asmus, I would like to thank you for definitely supporting these kids and making sure that their funds were covered for their Nationals trip because I know that's a big event for them. So thank you very much for helping out with that.
Thank you. So there, it has been a very busy month and I'm not going to talk specifically about any event, but I would like to just acknowledge the fact that it is a goal and a priority of this board to provide access to opportunities for our students. And so if you just think about everything that happens in our schools every day that provide just the memories that kids will remember forever, there's an adult that, that made that happen. So tonight, as we recognize our educators, I just want to remember that. As a board member, we get to go to events, we get to hang out, we get our picture taken, we get to say hi to people, and then we walk away, kind of like being a grandma. So I just want you to remember that all of these things happen because there are adults in our system that believe that's a priority as well. So just want to thank you all for that and thank you for including us and inviting us to all those things. So appreciate you. I think it's time for our work session report.
The work session began with a review of upcoming district events and graduation ceremonies. Assistant Superintendent Dr. Stacy Dattery provided an update on current, excuse me, on curriculum options. Board members spent time debriefing the book of field process. Legal Counsel Nathan Fall provided a legislative update and discussed policies being presented for their first reading. The work session concluded with a debrief from the Council of Student Representatives and each board member.
Thank you. And we have special items tonight that are very special. Our first one is Project Teacher Find Recognition. So Dr. Pilch, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pappas. This is very important, especially this time of year when we're gearing up to hire. We know how important it is that we're recruiting additional teachers into the field. I see Mrs. Overton moving to, I think, in this direction to introduce the candidates for Project Teacher Find to us. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Good evening. I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Human Resources, who actually participated on all the activities and the interviews. And so Amy Spruce is here, Director of Human Resources. Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Annette. Good evening, Vice President Pappas, board members, and Dr. Pilch. It is my pleasure to be here tonight to present to you our Project Teacher Find recipients. If they'd like to join me up here while I give you a little bit of background and then you can hear from them as well. Project Teacher Find is a cooperative initiative between UNC and District Six to identify, recruit, and retain District Six students for the teaching profession. Additionally, our school counselors and UNC team members work together to encourage students to become educational leaders by providing an opportunity to apply for the Project Teacher Find scholarships. The Project Teacher Find Committee has completed their scholarship interview process of interested District Six seniors. The committee interviewed three students who are pursuing their teacher education degree at the University of Northern Colorado this fall of 2023. Again, this year, all of the candidates were impressive. And this year, we were able to award scholarships to all three of our amazing candidates. They will all receive just a little over $2,900 apiece for each year they go to UNC. The students will be invited to a celebration at UNC where they will receive special recognition and learn about campus life. They will also be recognized at their respective schools during their awards evenings. The scholarship is another collaborative effort between District Six and UNC as we work to identify and develop our future educators. Through this ongoing partnership, we will increase the number of outstanding students at UNC and continue to grow our own teachers in District Six. I'm excited to have two of the three recipients join us tonight. Maria Huizar Diaz is not, oh, you are here. Surprise. They're all here, so I don't have to talk about any of them myself. They get to talk to you personally. So I would like to introduce or you to Jessica Guerrero, Maria Huizar Diaz, and Christopher Thill. And they will come up here and talk to you about their aspirations of becoming teachers. Thank you.
My name is Christopher Thill. I am a senior at Northridge High School, where I was a varsity football player. I have an aspiration of becoming an elementary ed teacher, as previously mentioned. I hope to attend UNC and then after graduation to come back to District Six because this district has been so grateful to me in helping me grow and become the person that I am. I would like to give thanks to this board and every member previously and every teacher that's ever helped me. And a special thank you to my parents and my grandma. As they're, they are my inspiration for becoming a teacher. As my grandma was a teacher and is now works for the district. And my mom is an employee of the district. And all their amazing work with kids.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Jessica Guerrero and I am a senior at Greeley Central. And I also want to attend UNC for a major in physical education. And I kind of want to become a physical education teacher because growing up, my PE classes were always really fun and engaging and they provided me a space where I could really let out my emotions and hang out with other students. So I also want to provide that back to other students, have them have a safe place where they can be themselves and have a little fun during the day. And I would also like to give thanks to all of the board members, to the inter, people who interviewed me, like Amy, and also my parents and my teachers, especially my PE teachers who have inspired me to become a PE teacher as well. And yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Maria Huizar Diaz and I am a senior at Greeley Central High School. Ever since I was a little girl, I knew I wanted to be a teacher because of the connections I formed with my teachers, even though I didn't know Spanish. So they were just really loving, understanding, and just amazing people. And I really hope to be like them and I want to be an elementary school teacher. So I'm going to UNC and majoring in elementary ed with an emphasis in math because I want to be a math teacher as well. And I'd like to thank all the teachers that I've had and the ones that I currently have, which are amazing because they have helped me to pursue my dream in education.
I'd just like to offer congratulations again to our Project Teacher Find recipients. And I'm thankful to be part of their District Six journey from students to staff. Would you guys have any questions for our students?
Ms. Mash?
Well, congratulations to each of you and I hope that I get to welcome you as employees in four years. That will be really fun, full circle. I was wondering if any of you have had the opportunity to work with some of our younger students in the district, kind of get a little taste of like being a student teacher or, or shadowing?
Yeah, so on top of doing volunteer work over at Krista McAuliffe, at Northridge, we have a STEM capstone project. And my capstone project was going into Krista McAuliffe, into each grade level and really discovering what it means to be a teacher at each grade level.
Dr. Campos Spitsy?
I have also.
Oh, I'm sorry. We will listen to you first. So sorry.
I have also experienced with students. So I was, I am in a teacher credit class currently. And as part of that, we were placed in a classroom for a couple of weeks. And I was with first graders for that period of time. And it was really interesting because I would go in the mornings and they would usually have their reading classes. But sometimes I would also go to stay with them the whole day and I would see them doing specials and stuff and it was a really cool experience.
Did you get to go to PE with them?
I did not go to PE with them, but on a different occasion with a drop shadow, I did go to a PE class.
Thank you. All right. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
Sure. So this is more a comment than a question. But for Jessica, choosing to possibly be a teacher in physical education, just want to let you know that you will be a lot of children's favorite teacher. One of my favorite questions to ask in clinic when I have school-aged kids is, what's your favorite class? And nine out of 10, it's always PE. I get some math and science in there too, but yeah. So you'll be a role model there and I appreciate you.
Mr. Norwood?
I just want to thank all of you, you three, for choosing to be teachers. I think it's a wonderful profession. Not enough students coming out of college now to fill all the positions. So thank you all for choosing to be teachers. And Chris, I remember having you in class. I had no idea you wanted to be a teacher, but I'm just, I'm thrilled for you. I really am. So thank you, guys.
Yes, thank you all for being here tonight. We're grateful that you have chosen to be a collaborative, be in this collaborative partnership with District Six and UNC. And we look forward to having you as teachers in District Six. So again, we're very grateful that you're here tonight. Thank you. Vice President Pappas, would you join us for a picture, please? Thank you again. And now we are going to Recognize Educator Appreciation Week. Dr. Pilch, have anything you want to say about that?
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. So this week is Education, Educator Appreciation Week. And so I believe we have a resolution here that the board will read and adopt. And then we have a little tribute when we get to the superintendent comments for our educators tonight. So really a big deal as we come up on these last few weeks of school that we have an opportunity to recognize our educators tonight.
It is a very big deal. And Ms. Mash, would you read that proclamation for us?
Yes, I will. Educator Appreciation Days. Whereas a well-educated public is essential to the preservation of our national freedom and our democratic system of government, and whereas the people of the United States have recognized that free access to a public education for all children is a vital component of a strong and vibrant country. And whereas the Board of Education recognizes and honors the important impact that teachers have on our children's education. And whereas a rich and well-rounded education includes curriculum, instruction, and support for the physical health and well-being of our children. And whereas children's education and the success of their schools is also dependent upon exceptional and dedicated leadership at the school and district level. And whereas it is appropriate that teachers and educational leaders be publicly recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Weld County School District Six proclaims the following national recognition dates to be celebrated and recognized in our local schools and communities of Greeley and Evans, Colorado during the spring of 2023. Administrative Professionals Week, April 24 through 28. Physical Education and Sport Week, May 1st through 7. School Lunch Hero Day, May 5th. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 8 through 12. School Nurses Day, May 10. National Education Bosses Week, May 15 through 19. Given under my hand and the executive seal of Weld County School District Six this 8th day of May, Mr. Michael Matthews, President.
Thank you. I am guessing that we will have some board comments? Ms. Mash?
Well, it's fun to get to read a proclamation. I just like the pomp of it and how celebratory and official it is. And we just very much want to celebrate all of the dedicated adults in our building that, that shape and teach and care for our students. So it is such a privilege to get to celebrate you on these specific occasions as well as every day.
Thank you. Dr. Campos Spitsy?
So yeah, my sister's a teacher and she's a little bit older than me, has been doing it for a long time. So I get to hear firsthand everything that teachers do and why you guys are really heroes. So from being mentors and role models to herding, you know, kindergartners, first graders. I, I have two preschool-aged children right now and I, I don't know how you guys control a classroom of 20 to 30 children, but while actually teaching them something. So I just think what you guys do every day, it's not just a profession, it's a vocation. And I know that you do it from, from the bottom of your hearts because it's the type of job that's a lot of work and, and sometimes doesn't pay as much as other jobs. So truly from the bottom of my heart, I'm glad that, that we continue to, that some of you out there continue to choose this vocation and, and serve our students and our community and our democracy really in that way. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, just kind of echo everybody else's words, but a big thank you to you guys. I've said this before, but you guys are the definition of under, underpaid and overworked. And just getting the chance to be in here as a school board member and inside the schools, be able to see what you guys do on a day-to-day and see the, the love in your hearts. There's no real other reason that you guys would do this day in and day out without the, the love for children and dedication to them. So just wanted to make sure I, I said my thanks and, and shared my gratitude and, and good job. You guys, keep it up.
Thank you. Yes, I will just close by saying, we, we don't have words really to say, I don't think, how much we do appreciate all of you, everyone that's being recognized in this Education Educators Proclamation. There are no words to describe how much we appreciate all of you. So thank you very, very much. And for those of you that are actually here at the board meeting tonight, thank you for being here. And if you're watching the board meeting, which I'm sure you have nothing else to do, thank you for watching the board meeting as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we now are going to move to the superintendent's report. Dr. Pilch?
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. I think we'll first go into a little video we have that really is intended to recognize our educators and give you a chance to see them and celebrate with them here in this video. And then I'll make some announcements on the district leadership team members that are on your agenda tonight for approval.
Ms. Collier taught me just how to like keep thriving even though things get rough. Like she's, she's been there for me and I don't even think she realizes it.
What I like about my teacher is she, she's really nice and she, she encourages us to do it. So today we took C-Mash, she was encouraging us to do it and believe in ourselves and trying our best.
Teacher here that I really appreciate would either be Mr. Mendez or Ms. Overton because they have really made me feel comfortable here and made me feel like I belong here.
I like about because she loved me.
He has really helped me with my PFAS and keeping track with my work. He also encourages students to do their work and be on their best behavior.
The best teacher is like, see the good thing in all the students.
She just has this spirit and upbeat attitude that just makes her day. She makes you feel welcome and supportive. So Ms. Sanford has been just a great teacher and advisor for me throughout high school and I'm completely grateful to her.
I love when my teacher, when she helps me to take deep breaths and thank you for calming me down.
He, he seems like a very serious and scary person, but inside we all know that he's just a big playful teddy bear. And one of my other teachers.
They're all really good teachers. They've helped me come a long way from where I was in the beginning of my gap journey to here.
Thank you for always being caring to me and to all of our friends. And thank you for just trying to have fun with us. I really appreciate all your effort that you put into all of our work.
Well, she gives me kind of like, um, things that are enough challenging for me. She is really funny and she helps me a lot.
He, um, always helps students through things and he has great personality while teaching. So he's just a great dude.
This professor specifically take goes out of his way to make sure that you know what colleges expect from you and how you can adapt.
Thank you for being here for the past few years I've been here and I'll be sad gradually.
Well, when I first came here, I was more worried about like, oh, I'm going to just fail and drop out. And then when I first was in Matt's class for the first quarter of last year. He kind of like pulled me out of the little shell I was in and helped me out a lot. And thanks to his instruction program, it's opened up a lot of doors for me. So that's a big plus for me. I'm very thankful for him and being in my life because he's just more, he's like a father figure for, uh, to me, you know, he's a really good guy. He's there for me when I need him. Great emotional support guy, so.
Wow. Thank you. So I think students say it far better than any of us could say it. Uh, so thank you to all of our educators. Thank you for all you do and thank you for your deep care and love and dedication to our students. So thank you. Hope you'll, we'll push this video out. I hope you'll push it out and share it throughout the district and let folks really celebrate the great work that, that our staff and students are doing here in District Six. So with that, I want to introduce to you all, um, the recommendations I have tonight in the agenda for our most recent district leadership team members, uh, who are, are on the consent agenda tonight. First, I'd like to ask Kelly Atkinson to stand up and, and give a wave. She will be our new Dean of Students at Madison Elementary School and I'm pleased to recommend her. She's been serving in education for over 15 years. Holds a, a degree in, um, special education and elementary and early childhood education. She's been a preschool teacher, a paraprofessional, a science teacher. She's worked in the library. Um, and then she was also a, a special education teacher at Meker Elementary when she first came to District Six. And then worked as a TOSA in a pseudo dean position there at Meker. And most recently she has served it, uh, as a fifth grade teacher at Madison Elementary. And she will be the new dean of students at Madison, um, there where she's currently teaching. She earned her bachelor's in elementary and early childhood from Florida State University. She's a long ways away from there now. Um, and a master's in special ed as well as an ed specialist in educational leadership and special education administration from the University of Northern Colorado. Thanks for joining our team as dean of students at Maplewood, uh, Madison. Kelly, welcome. Next, I want to introduce you Brian Deveraux. Um, Brian, I think, yes, I knew you were here. Stay there, stand up there in the back of the room. Brian is currently a teacher at Jefferson High School, where he has also served as an instructional coach and a physical education teacher. He, he's also a former Wyoming Knight. So that might've made me a little partial toward him. But he started his teaching career in Casper, Wyoming and, uh, served as an adjunct professor at Casper College. Um, and most recently for the last, um, seven or so years has been at Jefferson High School. Um, also taught reading at Jefferson. He's got his future, uh, District Six student there with him in his arms. We're glad to meet her as well, Mr. Deveraux. And, uh, pending your approval tonight, uh, we, we will welcome Brian as the new dean of students at Jefferson High School. And then Jorge Gonzalez Moncada. Jorge, where are you? So you all just met Jorge, uh, you know, just a little over a year ago, uh, when he came on as our assistant principal at the D6 Online Academy. He's done a fabulous job there and quickly rose to the top. I guess it's been two years now that you've been there. Quickly rose to the top as our, our top choice for the, the principal there at the online academy. And so we're excited to have Jorge joining us there. Prior to coming to District Six here a couple of years ago, he served as a mathematics teacher in the Brighton School District at Brighton High School. And, uh, he has a bachelor's of science degree from UNC in secondary ed with an emphasis, of course, in mathematics. And then he has a master's of arts in educational equity and cultural diversity from the University of Colorado Boulder. And then he completed his education specialist degree in educational leadership and policy studies from the University of Northern Colorado. Really glad to have the opportunity to have Jorge move into this position, which unfortunately opens up an assistant principal position, which we still need to hire after your approval of Jorge tonight. Congratulations. I believe Tammy Segarra is with us also tonight. Tammy, are you here? There you are. Hi Tammy. So you all know that, uh, Mark Romero retired this year after many, many, many years of dedication service to District Six. So filling those shoes is a really big job. But Tammy has served, um, here in District Six since 2015. She most recently was administrative assistant and attendance liaison at Greeley West High School. And in that role, she's gone way above and beyond, uh, really anything any one of us could have expected in terms of shadowing, uh, with Mr. Romero and really learning his job in hopes of one day being able to move into this position. And she loves our, our students here in District Six and our families. She's going to do a remarkable job for us in this role. She has a bachelor's of arts in criminal justice from the University of Northern Colorado, which was not a requirement that you have, you know, police officer training to do this job, but, but it probably can't hurt Tammy. So welcome. And we look forward to seeing you in that role as youth advocate coordinator in the academic achievement department. And then finally in your hires tonight, and, uh, Dr. Olson is not able to be with us tonight, but um, you are aware that Dr. Olson has been serving in a role as coordinator, um, of Title IX. This past year, we, uh, well, we revised the position and increased the responsibilities. We had some additional work that we need to do, um, out of the human resources and legal department. So we created the position of Director of Title IX and Compliance. So really you're a Title IX director and coordinator and a compliance officer. And Dr. Insoon Olson, um, has agreed to move into that position. As you all know, she's been in education, um, over 22 years. She's served as a teacher, a dean, an assistant principal, and a high school principal, uh, most recently at Northridge High School. Uh, she earned her bachelor's in biology from University of Northern Colorado Denver. Um, her master's in human resources studies from Colorado State University. An ed specialist and her doctorate degrees, um, and her doctorate most recently at University of Northern Colorado. So uh, join me in welcoming Dr. Olson pending tonight's approval. Thank you, Ms. Pappas. That will, will take care of my report for tonight. All right. Thank you. And congratulations to everyone. And we're so grateful that you've chosen to be part of District Six. So thank you so much. All right. Dr. Pilch, our next item is Innovation 2030 Systems of Support. If you'd like to say something about that.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Dr. Dattery and her team are making their way to the podium. This is an Innovation 2030 update for you all, um, in the area of culture and climate, and it's an update on our systems of support for students and staff. So with that, Dr. Dattery, I'll, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Uh, good evening, Vice President Pappas, of course Superintendent Pilch and members of the board. I am pleased to share with you alongside Ms. Kristen Dalton and Ms. Jamie Cranston, our Innovation 2030 Culture and Climate Update and specifically our system of supports for our staff and students. With the leadership of Kristen, uh, we are able to coordinate the supports among and between our social workers, our counselors, as well as our community partners, uh, such as North Range Behavioral Health to ensure that our students are supported academically and socially to be successful in school. This work has been ongoing in our district and we have had an even greater impact over the last few years as we have navigated some unprecedented times and really helped to support many of our students as well as staff. Our work is grounded, as we know, uh, in our District Six mission and our vision of engaging students in a well-rounded and excellent education, preparing them to be college and career ready. And further, we know these are the values that we live by in District Six. Most notably, I, the two that really pop out for us as we were preparing for tonight's presentation is that we ensure safe, secure, and healthy schools for our students. And that we build positive relationships with students, families, and communities. And I think you'll see both of those values evidenced in tonight's report to you. As you know, within Innovation 2030, we have these four focus areas. And the work of system of supports sits under the focus of climate and culture. There are two goals within each of these focus areas. And the goal that we are focusing on tonight is the second one in this particular area. In that we support the social and emotional wellbeing of students and staff. There are two objectives within this goal area. First is to, to develop and implement a district-wide plan to teach and embed social and emotional learning practices in classrooms in all schools. And that we will develop and implement a plan to improve staff's social and emotional wellness. And there are three associated outcomes that we are working and expect to achieve as a result of our work. And they are noted on this slide and we will give an update on those as we go through the presentation. So at this time, I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Kristen Dalton, as she's going to share more specifically the actions uh, and the next steps that we will take to further support our students and staff with our, within our systems of support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. So I'm thrilled today to talk to you a little bit, um, about how we focus our work around supporting our students and staff socially and emotionally. Want to take just a moment to review the competencies that you see on the screen that I didn't, are identified in our Colorado Comprehensive Health Standards that are the foundation of this work. We look to these five competencies, which as you can see, um, is, are really critical in in producing students who are college and career ready. They are critical aspects I imagine you think of as your, as in your own working world. Things that kids absolutely need to have before they leave our school system. We focus on providing opportunities for students to acquire and apply these skills. Really the focus is on impulse control and stress management. Really around responsible decision-making, being able to communicate with others and respect our social engagement, being able to take another person's perspective, being able to show empathy. And really around their own self-efficacy, their ability to recognize what they are able to do and how to push forward when things are tough. As we move forward, we want to talk about, um, our actions. So we've kind of categorized this in three areas. So development, um, we've created outcomes and next steps as well within our culture and climate work. We want to recognize that this work is not just myself. This is a huge group of people across our system um, who have had an opportunity to, to come together and really work to identify how we can support our students and staff. The work is part of that systems of support negotiation subcommittee, which is tasked with the continuous review and recommending of supports for students and staff. We are working together to create learning environments and experiences that best promote that social, emotional, and academic growth. So our, our actions tonight fall into four buckets, including the development of systems to strengthen collaboration, the alignment of evidence-based curriculum and instructional practices, the increase in community partnerships, and the implementation of our day-to-day activities that reflect our values and our beliefs. During the 22, 23 school year, our developmental, our development actions have focused on can, that continual alignment. So we're really trying to draw a thread with all of our services, with our equity teams and with our, uh, wellness teams, being able to really see a child for the whole child and try to remove as many barriers to education and learning as we can. When we take a look at our curriculum and instruction, we consider those practices that are building those competencies that are identified in our standards. We have a dedicated team that recently reviewed our bully prevention policies and our procedures regarding reporting bullying. That particular group, um, has worked really hard to align all of the new, our practices to the new state recommendations that just recently came out. In addition, we continue to provide strong professional development options for a variety of different, um, strategies that will support our students and in removing the barriers to learning. Those include our five competencies, our restorative practices, as well as our, um, focus on trauma-informed strategies. Our actions also include the huge work of our community partners. We could not do this work without our continued model partnership with North Range Behavioral Health. They help us meet the social and emotional and behavioral needs of students. We also work closely with CDE, Health and Wellness Initiatives, to support both students and staff wellness. We also have a new partnership that we're working with. It's a combination of CDE and, uh, the University of Maryland's National Center for School Mental Health. This particular, um, collaboration is really focused on the environments that we support students in learning, the relationships that they are learning to develop and the relationships between teacher and student, and engaging learning practices. So keeping them engaged. We know our kids are very different than they were 20 years ago when we started, when I started. We also focus on their health and wellness as well as their social and emotional behaviors. So this is a national, um, organization that has gathered both state and local districts to work together to really create some solid framework and intervention for students. When we take our next step into implementation, we're really considering our multidisciplinary mental health teams that through, um, your support, we've been able to hire our social workers, our school psychologists, our counselors that really work very closely together with our North Range Behavioral Health to review weekly data, data and address the prevention and intervention needs for students. We offer a variety of, uh, continuum of services for both students and staff. And we continue to partner with our family center and our engagement teams to make sure that our families and our community also feel a part of that work that we're doing with students and staff. So with that, I'm going to introduce a boots on the ground, Ms. Jamie Cranston, who's going to share with you just a little bit about what this looks like every day. Jamie is a counselor at McCullough STEM Academy.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, allowing me to come and talk to you this evening. Um, you know, I'll tell you that one of the best compliments I ever got was from one of my former principals. And he was a teacher and he came in one day and he shut the door and sat on my couch and he said, I never realized how much you do so that kids can still come to my class and learn. And I, I, it, it really resonated with me because there's so much that goes on in kids' lives that people don't always know what, what that is and how to support. And, and so giving them that opportunity, um, is really important. So you know, I, when I talk to students a lot, I tell them that I'm a teacher as well. We're We're, mental health is also teaching. We're teaching everything that they don't learn in the classrooms, you know, how to be good people, how to manage their stress and their anxiety, and knowing that it's okay to have those emotions, and what they can do with them and how they deal with them is very important in their growth as well. So we meet together once a week. Our mental health team consists of a school social worker, the school counselors, our school psychologist and administrator, and also the North Range Behavioral Therapist. And really, we just go through and talk about things that happen. We're really good at keeping some of the data on how many referrals we're making for the community, how many students we're seeing for self-harm or suicidal ideation, and just showing what our work is doing in that way, and then making sure that we are able to support them in the way that we can, whether that's through classroom lessons, whether that's small groups, whether that's individual, or doing those referrals to a mental health, a North Range therapist. So it really takes a village, and I'm happy that mental health is so big. We are in the spot right now where we have so many school counselors that I don't even know everybody, which is like the good-bad problem to have. So I'm just so thankful that the work that we do is supported through our district, and I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. So we're going to take a look a little bit now at our outcomes. One of our first goals was by 23-24 school year, 100% of our students will have action steps to address the social and emotional learning in their Unified Improvement Plans. So as we take a look at that data, you can see from '21 to '22, we were at 39%, '22 to '23, we were at 41%. This May, we have some action steps that we are supporting our leadership teams to make sure that we meet that 100% rule. We've all shared that as we move forward, removing barriers for student learning is absolutely critical. So we have great instruction that's happening. It's helping those students be prepared and ready when they walk in that classroom for that instruction. Next, we take a look at our outcome data for our students. By 2026, District 6 will show students at or above the 50th percentile on all four of the social-emotional learning competencies that are measured in our annual student survey. So you can take a look at this. Shows you just a peak from '22 to '23 in the fall to currently our most recent survey here in the spring. And you can see that even just within this year, with the interventions that we've been able to apply, we are seeing that our students have at or above the 50th percentile when compared nationally to other students in the same age in three out of the four areas. Again, nationally, we see the one area being the most challenging around self-management. We continue to hit that pretty hard. So as we continue to take a look at that exception and the ability of students to be able to manage their emotions or identify the new stress strategies, stress management strategies, we continue to work with our teachers through the NTSS or the Multi-Systems of Support Program to be able to identify how we can best meet those needs at each When we take a look at our 6th through 12th grade students, you can see those numbers are a little more challenging. This is consistent with not only that development of that time, their ages, but it's also consistent with nationally, across the United States, we're seeing a significant mental health crisis for students 6th through 12th. We continue to work really hard by looking at our data to watch these students showing their growth in some social awareness and emotional regulation, and we're really dialing into their feelings of less self-efficacy. So that feeling of when I walk into a classroom, I'm going to meet the challenge, that's what those questions are really about. And so that's something that we continue to have to dial in and focus on. So as we dig deeper, we're really looking for all the ways that we can access supports within our system to make sure that we're removing as many of those barriers and improving those attitudes and behaviors. At this point, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Dattery, who's going to share the outcomes associated with our staff wellness.
Thank you, Kristin. And so our data on this is, some of it's baseline data, and that is that by 2026, 90% of district staff will respond positively that they are supported socially and emotionally in their workplace, as seen on the annual staff survey. So we gave, for the first time, the site based in the operations staff this survey, and so that's the baseline, and they both actually, or both came out at 68% favorable in their perceptions of their own professional wellbeing and how they are being supported in this area. Now, what we do have is 93% of our teachers are reporting favorable perceptions of their school community. That is the closest. These are different surveys, and so we will be working, as we go forward, to think, what are some additional targeted questions that we might be able to ask of teachers in addition to their school community? That was the one that most closely matched with this particular area. And so as we move forward and we think about this coming year and the support that we want to continue to provide in this area, there are really four key areas and next steps that we will be taking as a team. The first is looking at the additional training for social-emotional skills in this area, both for our staff that include trauma-informed and restorative practices, and those further development of the five competencies of social and emotional behavioral health. We really believe that in continuing to provide the supports and training for our staff, we can help better support our students in these areas. Second to that is to expand our Family and Student Support Council to include parents and students and additional educators. There is a small team that is working, this council is going, and we really know that we need additional stakeholders in this area that really helps to inform the work and to continue to support this area. So the team will be expanding that group to involve additional stakeholders. We will also increase our tools for our families and educators to build that social and emotional and behavioral health skills for our students. So again, as we are increasing that training, it's also about providing the tools to support them in, from basic things to support as a parent and with families, to more challenging situations that they may be encountering, and providing them with access to those tools of both our families as well as our educators in that area. That'll be done through our website as well as by training educators and further supporting our counselors in that area to provide those resources out into families. And then finally, we have a new Behavior Procedures document, and we will work to continue as we are rolling that out for the first time this coming school year. We're piloting that currently, and we will be rolling that forward in all of our elementary, middle, and high schools. We want to make sure that we are combining that document and aligning it with initiatives around multi-tiered systems of support and that PBIS, which is the Positive Behavior Support Systems as well, to ensure that there is total alignment and that our schools and administrators have consistency of implementation of the behavior procedures universally throughout the district. So those are really the four main areas that we'll be focusing on, and we thank you for your time as we've shared a little bit, a glimpse into the world that our folks are doing in this area of culture and climate. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions, comments, thoughts? Ms. Mash?
Just want to say thank you for that presentation. I believe that May is Mental Health Awareness Month, so it's a perfect time to get an update. Definitely, the mental health of our students and staff was at the forefront of our conversations in our negotiations, and so I just appreciate all the innovative ways that we're looking to support our students from all different angles, and I'm so glad to hear that you don't know all of the counselors. That's a super great problem to have, because before, we used to have one counselor for a couple of different schools, and, you know, to have a student load of many hundreds of students is really challenging. So thank you very much. Thank you for your good work, and I look forward to further updates.
Yes, thank you. And as board members, I don't know if people realize that we are fortunate enough to participate in that process during negotiations and be part of just listening to and knowing what is important as far as mental health and social-emotional learning. So I appreciate that. The other thing, I guess, I've been talking to some graduating seniors and just realizing that what an impact the pandemic had on our students, and I know that we're seeing a lot of that just in the mental health crisis that we are experiencing right now. So I just am grateful for all the work that you all do, and like Ms. Mash said, I think just knowing that we have committed to providing resources, to providing that support to our students and staff is greatly appreciated. So thank you all for everything you do, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public participation. The Board welcomes the comments of community members and has dedicated a portion of each business meeting agenda to providing an opportunity for the community to present brief comments to the Board. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. The Board typically does not engage in discussion or provide an immediate response to the input, but will ask district staff to respond as appropriate. Written testimony or speaker handouts must be submitted to the Board Secretary, not to individual Board members. The Board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and expects all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and speakers' remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. Anyone who disrupts order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. All speakers and those in attendance shall conduct themselves in a non-disruptive manner. Cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not allowed during or upon completion of any public comment. And we have five speakers tonight, and our first speaker is Ellen Foster. Thank you, Ms. Foster, for being here tonight.
Thank you for this opportunity. Perhaps you've heard that it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so in honor of that, I'm reading some excerpts of a poem written by Taylor Molly, who is a slam poet and a teacher. And this is a poem he wrote in response to being at a dinner party with a lawyer who was talking about how much he earned and saying, "Well, what do you make? You want to know what I make? I make kids work harder than they ever thought they could. I can make a C+ feel like a Congressional Medal of Honor and an A- feel like a slap in the face. How dare you waste my time with anything less than your very best? I make kids sit through 40 minutes of study hall in absolute silence. No, you may not work in groups. No, you may not ask a question. Why won't I let you go to the bathroom? Because you're bored, and you don't really have to go to the bathroom, do you? I make parents tremble in fear when I call home. Hi, this is Mr. Molly. I hope I haven't called at a bad time. I just wanted to talk to you about something your son said today. "To the biggest bully in the grade," he said. Leave the kid alone. I still cry sometimes, don't you? It's no big deal. And that was the noblest act of courage I have ever seen. I make parents see their children for who they are and what they can be. You want to know what I make? I make kids wonder. I make them question. I make them criticize. I make them apologize and mean it. I make them write. I make them read, read, read. I make them spell "definitely beautiful, definitely beautiful, definitely beautiful" over and over and over again until they will never misspell either one of those words again. I make them show all their work in math and hide it in their final drafts in English. Here, let me break it down for you so you know what I say is true: Teachers make a difference. Now what about you?
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Our next speaker tonight is Maria Foster. Thank you for being here tonight, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. I've been attending the Board meetings since the winter break because I wanted to come in person and form an opinion based on what I saw, not what somebody else might tell me. And here are some of the things I've learned since coming. I've learned that all the MLO projects are being completed on time and on budget. I've learned that we have an award-winning food service program that merited a visit from the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture. I've learned that we have a nationally-recognized ROTC rifle team at Northridge High School. I've learned that student involvement and input is valued, as witnessed by the fact that we have student council members at every meeting. I've learned that the district decided to continue funding free school meals even when the national COVID funding ran out. And I learned that we produced four better scholars out of only 47 in the state, which is a disproportionately large percentage. And I don't think I will soon forget the joy on a little girl's face as she ran past me after her artwork had been selected for the calendar on anti-bullying. Many years ago, in a Sunday school class, a pastor held up a sheet of paper that had a small black dot on it, and he asked us, "What do you see?" And people said, "I see an ink stain. I see a black circle. I see a black mark." And what he wanted us to notice was that we were looking at a piece of paper. I've heard a lot of people get up here and they talk a lot about that little black mark. I want the Board to know that there are a lot of people who see the entire paper, and we appreciate all the hard work that has gone into the district. We appreciate many of the achievements. We value the hard work of the teachers, the staff, the counselors, the food service workers, the bus drivers, everybody that makes this district work. Thank you, and I look forward to attending next year to learn even more about the school district.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Welcome, Mr. Pedarius, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you, Vice President Papas and members of the Board. I thank you for the privilege of speaking this evening. This evening, I want to draw to your attention a recent article and broadcast and publication by Colorado Public Radio CPR. The title reads, "Gag Orders on Teachers: Cutting Mental Health Support, Operating in the Dark. What's Happening in Woodland Park, Colorado?" I ask that you obtain a copy of this and read it and reread it. The content is most disturbing to me. I think it might be of concern to you also. Is it the canary in the public school mine? You know, the canary that miners took down to see if there was poisonous gas in their area of work? Is this the public school mine? Canary? Could this happen in other Colorado school districts? Could be. Hope not, but we now have declared school board candidates that may choose to be candid and transparent as to their purpose of running for our Board of Education. Everyone should read this article and then ask each candidate their perspective on these matters and their attitudes towards what has happened in Woodland Park. I believe we need to clarify the intent of every school board member and candidate and encumbers.
Thank you, Mr. Pedarius.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker this evening is Mr. Restodhi. Welcome.
Good evening. I appreciated Natalie Nash's thank you note seeking more renewable energy information. Appreciate it too. Were calls from Kent Henson responding to my public comments. I knew when making these comments that often you would be ahead of me when considering alternatives towards progress. Nevertheless, while pondering the wisdom and urgency of Colorado striving to have 2,000 electric school buses by 2027 and full fleet transition in 12 years, if you've not yet done so, I urge you to go out with the teachers when they're loading and unloading school buses. And as you bask in the twice daily exhaust, reflect that since 2012, the World Health Organization has acknowledged diesel exhaust as carcinogenic. How does that fit in to one of the goals that I just saw here? I want you to concede as well, peer-reviewed research indicating that the American Lung Association advocates transition to fuel a fuel-fueled free fleet. I'm not going to go into the rest of this uh right now because you can read it, but I want to just highlight a couple of things. The financing on this is moving very fast. That you'll see how you can check on the Environmental Protection Agency um Bus Grant Program webinar, which is going to occur on Wednesday, the first one. You want to get on the ground floor for that. So that's number one. Number two, the last thing that I I put on here is an indication from an outfit called Highland Electric Fleet. They've just done some things with a a charter school in Lafayette, which I've highlighted. And so that wow, that went off fast.
And we did receive your handout.
Okay, well, you can check on all those things. Thank you.
Our next speaker tonight is Ms. Sonia Miller. Welcome, Ms. Miller, and you'll have two minutes.
Good evening, my friends and foes on the dais, the public at large, and the spirits that guide us. Our school district needs you. Our children aren't safe. Our board has been captured. The swamp never got drained. Thank you, Rob Norwood and Ms. Taylor Sullivan, for your vote to protect our children from porn. The rest must have something held over their head, or maybe they're living their lives under threat, or maybe it's the money they've taken instead. But complaints were delivered directly to you back in December of '22. The process was followed. We jumped through your hoops. So Beloved, the book was now up for review. A committee was formed, handpicked just for you, to determine this book's literary value. This club's invite only, so you shouldn't expect to become a member if you're one to object. Lawyers advised them their membership's secret. They hide behind policies and change them as needed. Beloved tell stories where men get aroused by women and children and even the cows. Rape scenes are depicted in graphic detail, as are killings of babies and breastfeeding males. When the committee finally came to consensus, two of six pages is the letter they sent us. They determined this porn was educationally suitable, then Pilch agreed. This crap's inexcusable. So who actually sits on this perverted committee? You claim that they live here and work in our city. The public deserves to know all of their names. Who are you hiding? What is your aim? You praise them and thank them for spending their time ensuring access to books that depict sexual crimes. The F-word, the N-word, this book has it all. After public objection, the board had the gall to vote to keep it in libraries, claiming access for all. It's not to our children their allegiance has sworn. Just look at these tools. They voted for porn. Their souls aren't their own. The trade has been made. The dotted line signed. The public betrayed.
Next on our agenda is the consent agenda and that requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approve items as presented on the consent agenda and authorize the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I think we're ready for roll call, Ms. Lemon. Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is, well, actually several of agenda items are revisions to policies. The first one is revision to policy ADD Safe Schools. That requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves revisions to policy ADD Safe Schools policies as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Pilch, would you like to say anything about that policy?
Just if there are questions, I'm happy to take those.
All right, any questions or comments? Ms. Lemon? Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. The next item is revision are revisions to policy GBAB Workplace Health and Safety Protection. That also requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the revisions to policy GBAB Workplace Health and Safety Protection as presented.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions regarding that policy? All right, Ms. Lemon, thank you. Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. The next item is revisions to J. Student Policies. And that also requires a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves revisions to the J. Students Policies as presented.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Lemon? Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. And the final one is the first we had a first reading of JLCDC and JLCDCR, medically necessary treatment in school settings. We did have the opportunity to talk about this at our work session today. Don't know if anybody wants to make any comments or has any addition needs any additional clarification or Dr. Pilch, if you want to add anything to that.
I think our discussion in the work session was robust. If you all have any other questions or comments, I'm happy to take those.
Seeing none, that is not an action item. That was a first read for that. So we will move on to our next agenda item, which is the AP Curriculum Adoption. And that does require a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the adoption of AP curriculum as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. And it looks like Dr. Dattery has moved to the podium.
Ms. Pappas, I will just say that, you know, seven years into this mill levy override, we are still adopting curriculum to catch up from those with those mill levy override dollars from where we were prior to the passage of the mill levy override. So the the curriculums you see tonight begin to round that out for us and then we'll begin all over again with the curriculum that we adopted seven years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch, Vice President Pappas, and members of the board. Tonight, we are bringing forward a recommendation from the Advanced Placement Curriculum Adoption Committee and our District Curriculum Council. And I am joined tonight by Ms. Amanda Krieger, as she led the curriculum adoption work. This is the fifth year as we are in a five-year process right now of updating our AP curriculum resources. And in the next few slides, we are going to share with you the process and the results of the work of this committee this year. So the resources being brought forward to you for consideration this evening include AP English Language and Composition and AP Human Geography, as they have been inconsistent currently in practice across our high schools in District Six. In addition, the landscape of instruction has changed since these courses have been implemented. And in order to successfully prepare our students for college and career readiness in a 21st century, both our traditional and our digital components of our curricular resources are necessary now. So therefore, this year, we are asking the board for your approval of these materials for the advanced placement courses brought to you this evening. So I'm now going to ask Ms. Amanda Krieger to share more about our process and the purpose of this adoption committee. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. The purpose for these new textbooks and digital platforms is threefold. First, it will provide updated resources students need to align with the new suite of online classroom supports, including unit guides and exam descriptions that the College Board introduced for advanced placement courses in the 2019-2020 school year. Additionally, the College Board created the Advanced Placement Equity and Access Policy to promote equitable access to advanced placement courses and encourages the elimination of barriers that restrict access to traditionally underrepresented populations. Finally, in order to meet the expectations for the rigor of AP courses, students need explicit instruction that facilitates meaningful discourse by posing rich inquiry questions and promoting productive struggle. These criteria were considered by the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee during the curriculum review process so that these new resources would be aligned to the expectations of College Board for AP courses. The teachers and leaders who served on the AP Curriculum Adoption Committee deserve our deepest appreciation for their participation in this process. This slide contains their names and roles in the committee's work. The dialogue and debate between these educators created conversations that pushed thinking forward as resources were strategically evaluated so that the highest quality materials were chosen to best meet the needs of our students. And I would also like to, they say thank you to the two members of this committee who are with us tonight. That is Stephen Paulson and Emily Wallen. If they would just stand up and wave to you all, please. Thank you for being here with us. Before I share with you the committee's recommendation of resources, I would like to walk you through the process and timeline of their work. During the initial meeting on October 27th, the committee spent time reviewing the AP Equity and Access Policy and the philosophy of access and equity for all students to rigorous courses. They read articles and discussed how this would be incorporated into the resource selection process. They then reviewed current resources being utilized and identified potential resources to review. In November, Dagan Andrews, Director of Curriculum, presented to the committee on the different types of curriculum and how it supports student learning. The committee then revisited access and equity for AP and reviewed the Analyzing Instructional Materials, or AIM rubric, line by line, and discussed the correlation of the rubric specifically to the academic demands of an advanced placement course. They began the resource review with digital components. In December, the committee read articles on gifted Hispanic student success and discussed the potential impact on District Six students. The committee then began the review of different resources and utilized the AIM rubric to evaluate them against the criteria. In January, the AP Human Geography Committee members continued the digital and physical material review process, while the AP English Language and Composition Committee members reviewed the changes to the AP English Language and Composition exam. The AP English Language and Composition teachers had previously participated in the 2019-2020 AP Curriculum Adoption and then determined that they had a need to reconvene based on updates to the test to ensure that they had the resources necessary to support student success. The resource review continued through February and in March, the committee determined the finalist resources. AP Human Geography had vendor presentations on the digital components of the finalist resources on March 23rd, and AP English Language and Composition chose to move two resources forward to specifically address support of instruction around rhetorical methods. Both teams finalized the AIM rubric ratings. After reviewing the final AIM rubric ratings, as well as the feedback gained from students, staff, family, and community on the various resources shared, the committee made a final recommendation to the District Curriculum Council. The council approved the recommendation and advanced these resource adoption materials to the Board of Education presented to you this evening.
So the total for the AP English Language and Composition text and the two human AP Human Geography texts and digital resources, including the online resources and the databases, is $110,754.63. And this was budgeted for in our 2022-2023 mill levy override budget. And again, it is just so important for us to say thank you to our community who are who supports us in this area so that we can provide these most up-to-date resources for our students. The process for this committee has been rigorous, as evidenced by the materials in your board packet, and they have been meticulous in choosing the most appropriate instructional resources for each of these advanced placement courses. These resources adhere to the criteria set forth by College Board to meet the rigorous expectations of advanced placement courses, and they take into consideration the diversity of our students in District Six. We believe these quality resources will continue to provide a well-rounded educational experience in all of our AP courses, including these two brought to you tonight. So thank you for your time this evening and consideration to this adoption. Thank you. We did have the opportunity to hear a brief overview from Dr. Dattery in our work session, but are there additional questions or comments or thoughts from board members? Ms. Mash?
Mine is just a comment and thank you very much. What I mean, it takes a whole year to do this. So thank you for taking the time to find the absolute best curriculum. And I just want to say, as has been evident in so many areas in District Six, we provide an excellent education in a round building, in a building with a leaky roof, and we provide an excellent education with outdated curriculum because we have amazing educators. My daughter has taken both of these AP classes and has done well and was able to, you know, to score well on those tests. So I just thank you that, well, I'm glad that we will now have a curriculum that supports the amazing educators that we have.
Um, I also want to thank you, and I have said this before, but I'll say it again. I really appreciate the consistency in the process with the AIM rubric, the the people that you have that have participated in this process and just the consistency over time. So we appreciate you. We appreciate everyone that worked on that and thank you for both of you being here tonight to share with us. Thank you. Did we vote on this? Okay, so, all right, we need to vote. Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is, again, a curriculum adoption, the K-8 Music and PE curriculum.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the adoption of K-8 Music and PE curriculum as presented.
Second.
Thank you both. Do you have anything you want to say about Dr. Pilch? Okay, we'll turn it right over to you, Dr. Dattery. All right, thank you. Thank you, Vice President Pappas, Superintendent Pilch, and again, our members of our board. It is my pleasure to also bring to you tonight a recommendation from our K-8 Music and our K-8 PE Curriculum Adoption Committee and from the District Curriculum Council. And I am joined this time by Mr. Bill Fern, and he is our secondary curriculum coordinator and K-12 specials coordinator, and he has led this curriculum adoption work. So in the next few slides, we will again share with you the process that these fine people went through and the results of their work and the recommendation to you this evening. So the Colorado academic standards have been updated since the time of which these last materials were adopted by our Board of Education in both music and PE. And that was nearly 10 years ago for elementary and middle level music and nearly 20 years ago for our elementary and middle school PE. And adopting the recommended materials will ensure consistent, equitable music and physical education programs aligned with our updated and current Colorado state standards. And we just thank you for being able to, again, with our mill levy override dollars, to be able to bring this to you this this evening. I know our teachers are very thankful as well that we will be able to bring this to you tonight. tonight. Bill Fern is now going to share with you the process that this committee went through to bring these resources to you for your consideration. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. As you can see, this slide lists the names of all of the teachers, administrators, and community members who contributed to this process. Their insights, attention to detail, and meticulous research allowed us to select the best materials and resources for music and physical education. This work was undertaken going through evaluation in line with District Six's I-2030 goals and a philosophy statements for Music and PE that were developed by the committee. I'm also joined here tonight by three of our committee members, Mr. Andrew Hess, Alexis Badiel, and Megan Relaford. And I also want to express my gratitude to all of the folks up there that participated in this process. This work started in the fall with evaluation of potential materials. The committee first met as a group in December and developed a common vision for both Music and PE instruction, developing philosophy statements. The Analyzing Instructional Materials, or AIM rubrics, that were used to evaluate all of the considered material were closely scrutinized and refined with a focus on equity and access. Dagan Andrews, Director of Curriculum, presented to the committee on the different types of curriculum and how it supports student learning. In January, physical material and digital preview accounts were made available for all of our committee members. In March, we reviewed the scores for all of the reviewed materials. Input was also sought from K8 Specialist Teachers district-wide, and samples were made available for community review, including digital links. Research was also undertaken into what other districts and schools across the country were using and how effective they've been in practice. Based on the quality and strength of the materials, scores from the AIM rubrics, as well as the input that was collected over the course of this process, finalists were selected. Vendors were then invited to present on the resources to the committee. After vendor presentations, reviewing the final AIM rubric ratings, as well as taking and considering all the feedback from stakeholders involved in the process, the committee made its final recommendations to the District Curriculum Council. The council approved the recommendations to bring these resources, to bring the materials to you, the Board of Education, which we present to you now.
So again, the total cost for the recommended curriculum is $79,773, and this is, again, as I said, funded from a Mill Levy Override, which will serve all of our students from kindergarten through eighth grade. Spark is a full rigorous digital curriculum for physical education, and that also includes physical materials for PE teachers, so small equipment types of things that they would need. Music Play Online is a dynamic digital curriculum, which includes a multimedia of research-based digital activities and lessons, and in combination with the game plan, Refresh, so that's a refresh, we've had game plan and now it'll be refreshed to be in alignment with Music Play Online, and that'll provide the remaining physical materials to fully support our K5 music programs. And then finally, the Tradition of Excellence and Essential Elements series are methods books that will bring consistency and continuity to our middle-level band and orchestra programs. Based on the extensive work of the adoption committees, we believe that these resources will provide a robust and well-rounded curriculum and consistent curriculum for our K8 Music and Physical Education classrooms. And finally, just to share with you some next steps for our Music and PE teachers, they will receive initial training on these new resources and materials on Curriculum Day of August 8, 2023, and then our curriculum guides will be adjusted and updated and brought to you in August with providing the integration of these resources within the written curriculum. And we will continue to provide ongoing professional development support throughout the year during the District Curriculum Professional Development Days in the 23-24 school year. So again, I thank you for your support of us in this area, and we'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Dr. Campos Fizzi?
Supposedly a comment and, like, a grateful comment. So for both the AP English and Human Geography, as well as the K-8 Music and PE curriculum, when we're talking about it at the work session, and again, you guys have made a lot of comments about keeping things consistent across the schools, keeping equity, that a lot of pushing this curriculum through is to make things more equitable amongst our different schools and our different student populations at the different schools, and so really appreciate that, and I think that's strong, important work that you guys are doing. Thanks.
Thank you. I would just echo that, and thank you for your work, and how exciting for our young teacher that is going to be a PE teacher. She'll have a new curriculum. How exciting is that? So thank you. Thank you both, and also thank all of the people that participated. Appreciate you. And we do need to take a vote. Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Fizzi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Pappas?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries six, zero. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda does not require board approval, and we are going to talk about bully prevention supplemental curriculum. Again, Dr. Dattery and Dr. Pilch, did you want to say anything? All right.
Thank you, Vice President Pappas, Superintendent Pilch, and members of the board. As I shared with you earlier tonight, this is an information item, so it does not require action, as this is, these are supplemental resources that we are bringing to you tonight, but we want to make sure that you are aware and know that this will, this is going to be implemented in this coming 23-24 school year in support of bully prevention work. So this adoption process was initiated to ensure that we are in compliance with updated state law Colorado Department of Education policy, as well as being in alignment with our updated board policy, JICDE. Joining me this evening is Mr. Dagan Andrews. He is our Director of Curriculum and Personalized Learning, and he oversaw and facilitated this process. He is going to share with you more fully the members that were involved in this process, as well as the overall scope of work that went into this decision for these supplemental resources. So thank you, Mr. Andrews, for your guidance and work on this as you share.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Appreciate the introduction. In alignment to the policies described by Dr. Dattery, our diverse group of committee members, including counselors, teachers, a principal, and a parent representative, reviewed materials that explicitly teach students how to recognize, refuse, and report bullying. And I would just like to take a moment to recognize Deb Heck. She is our lead counselor. She's in the room tonight and was absolutely instrumental to this process, so. The resources on this list for review were recommended by the Colorado Department of Education because of their proven effectiveness in reducing instances of bullying. On February 15th, we began our selection process. Members of the committee were provided an overview of the timeline and process, reviewed potential resources, and came to agreement on the rubric for evaluating the instructional materials. The rubric selected was based on recommendations by experts who oversee bullying prevention at the Colorado Department of Education. On February 23rd, committee members were broken into teams of two to review and score each resource. On March 22nd, based on overall rubric scores, three final resources were identified. Between March 24th and April 4th, the three final resources were also put on display here in the district office, and digital access was also sent out for community members to provide feedback. All of the feedback received was positive on each resource, and the feedback was taken into consideration by committee members to take the final recommendation. On April 5th, additional information was gathered through presentations and question-and-answer sessions provided by experts representing each of the three final resources. Following the presentations, committee members were provided an opportunity to update rubric scores based on the additional information they received. On April 13th, final recommendations were presented to our District Curriculum Council. On April 18th, final recommendations were presented to the District Accountability Committee. On May 4th, DCC voted unanimously to provide final approval for the Elementary and Secondary supplemental resources. The three finalists were Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports, known as PBIS for Secondary, Olveas for Elementary and Secondary, and Second Step for Elementary. In the table, you can see how the committee scored each resource in six areas. The rubric includes six main questions. Does the resource address the need of the intended group? Are the practices a good fit for our community? Is there evidence to support the effectiveness of the resource? Is the program well-defined? Can it be adapted to fit different groups? Is there capacity to support implementation? And are there expert resources available to support implementation? You can see how each resource was scored in all six areas with five being a perfect score. The committee's final selection is PBIS for Secondary and Second Step for Elementary, and these resources were formally approved through District Curriculum Council as they are supplemental resources. The combined cost for both supplemental resources is $48,772.80. PBIS is a free resource, and so the total cost is based on the purchase of the Second Step Elementary materials. We appreciate the opportunity to provide this informational item and are excited to have such quality resources designed specifically to recognize, refuse, and report bullying. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we had the opportunity during the work session to hear some of this information and to ask questions. Are there any other questions or clarifications? Seeing none. Thank you both so much. And again, the committee members, thank you for being here, Ms. Heck, and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
The final item on our agenda is the District Accountability Committee Budget Recommendation, and this is not an action item. Dr. Pilch, do you have anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. I see that we have Erin Bly, our Chair for our District Accountability Committee. Thank you for all of your work, Erin, and Dr. Dattery here at the podium. They'll walk you through DAC's role in making budget recommendations, and then they will share with you what they learned from DAC at our last District Accountability Committee meeting and in relation to the budget recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Pilch. So as Superintendent Pilch just mentioned, one of the District Accountability Committee's responsibilities is to make recommendations to its local school board member regarding the spending of school district funds. So in preparation, this is not just a one-night meeting agenda item, but rather, this is ongoing work throughout the year. So to prepare for making such a recommendation to the Board of Education, our District Accountability Committee members have worked on the District Unified Improvement Plan to know what the focus is of the work and the next level of improvement work for the district. They are very aware and understand the innovation, there's our strategic plan, Innovation 2030. And additionally, they have gained a deeper understanding of the district priorities and the challenges through the discussions that we have during our superintendent's forum and other information or discussion items that are presented to them throughout the year. All of that work goes into being able to share with you this budget recommendation tonight. So with me tonight is Chairperson Erin Bly, and she's going to present the top recommended budget priorities from our District Accountability Committee that occurred at our last DAC meeting. Thanks, Erin, for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Dattery. Please excuse my voice. I cheered on our Greeley West Swim and Dive team really well this last weekend. After spending a considerable amount of time learning throughout the year and then discussing these areas of focus at the last meeting, the DAC made recommendations regarding the budget for next year. The committee ranked their priorities on a scale of four to one, with four being low priority and one being a high priority. The total response scores were tallied to gain an overall prioritization, with the highest priority score possible being 11. The highest recommended priority for DAC was to maintain staffing ratio to keep class sizes from increasing, which received 28 points. The next three priority items are parent and family advocates, advocates in each elementary, K-8 and middle school, school counselors, and Chromebook purchases to maintain a one-to-one student device ratio. Additional recommendations that were made from DAC include maintaining an attendance advocate at the high schools, providing school social workers to all schools, and providing full-time nurse and health clerks in each school. These are also listed in the board handout, as well as a few additional comments. While we understand that this is just one piece of the budget process, we hope that you will consider our recommendation as representatives from all the schools across our districts. We have become familiar with the budget process. We work within, and we believe these priorities will further support our teachers and students to be successful. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Erin. Do we have any comments or questions? Ms. Mash?
Thank you for being here. Thank you for that presentation. I was just curious about the additional recommendations. If you could maybe speak to what the recommendation is around the online school. I wasn't sure if there is a specific recommendation in there.
So I believe-
I can read it to you if you'd like.
Thank you. It's right here. Thank you. Staffing for that, continue.
Yeah, I'm fine. So for including administrative support and counselors and teachers, just like our regular schools, are you talking about the third one from the bottom?
Yeah, so it says, it seems if there were a demand for D6 online, the enrollment would justify the staffing required. Our kids need to be served whether they're online or in person. So I was just curious if there is a specific recommendation in that statement.
I think it's those online students are just as important as our students that are in person, and making sure that that equity across the board is there. And so that way, if those online students need that support, that they have some way to access it.
Well, thank you. We know that the DAC parents are very committed and passionate about their service to the community, to the district, and we appreciate you, your leadership role, and just thank you for this information. I think it matches what we've heard earlier tonight and the importance that we have put a priority on in District Six, so thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dattery. And that is the final agenda item, so this meeting is adjourned.